All right, it's seven o'clock. I will call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission. All members of the Planning Commission are present, all seven. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I received relatively late notice that the public hearing scheduled for tonight related to a proposed ordinance amendment for golf driving ranges. Because we did not convene our regular February meeting due to a lack of a physical quorum, that public hearing should have been noticed subsequent to the canceled meeting. It was not, and so I would ask that we strike under item D1, Golf Driving Ranges Ordinance Amendment, Public Hearing from the Agenda, and with that I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Kohler, thank you.
A second.
Mr. Light, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes from the December 15th regular meeting, the January 19th regular meeting, and then the special meeting that we convened in February subsequent to our meeting that was canceled for lack of a quorum. Ms. Ishii, I think, was the only one who proposed edits, and she sent those in advance of the meeting, and hopefully everyone had a chance to review those. In a motion to adopt the meeting minutes, I would just ask for someone to include Ms. Ishii's edits as part of your motion. Anybody like to put forward a motion to adopt those three sets of minutes?
I'll move to adopt the three sets of minutes with Ms. Ishii's edits.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler.
Second.
Mr. Light, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Next is just a general public comment period, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to say anything you'd like relevant to the Planning Commission's work. We do have three preliminary reviews for different permit applications on the agenda tonight, and so any discussion from the applicants related to those applications can wait until we get to that part of the agenda. So this is just a general public comment period. If anyone's interested, I'll open the public comment period. Okay. I'll close the public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda under new business is a preliminary review. This is a special use permit, number 22-01-01, a very auspicious permit number. I think that's first in 2022. And this is Gilder Frontier LLC Tax Map 28-1-125. This is for a tourist home allowed under 170 66K and the other provisions cited in our packet. Ms. Summers, if you could just give us a brief introduction on the application. And for everyone's awareness, this is the building just down the fodder stack slightly on the right-hand side as you're headed east, and this is a, I think it's a concrete cinder block building across from the church there that has been sitting idle for quite some time. So, Ms. Summers?
Thank you. Ms. McPherson, have a lot for three different four zones. The property located at 472 Men Street, just outside of Washington. The property is two acres in size and it's owned a whole residential. The building was once used as a fellowship hall, but they plan to renovate the building. The Health Department commented verbally into my office that they had to, that will get some denotarized agreement with REC to install a septic system under their transmission line. The Health Department approval will be conditioned upon the installation of the septic, and BDOT has no objections.
Great. Thank you. Just one threshold question. Are there any four zone to ag and conservation? We have a minimum lot size requirement. Is there any such requirement for rural residential zoning districts?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks. I'd invite the McPhersons to make any comments if you wish, and you don't have to. We can just work off the application as it's presented. And if you want, just step up to the microphone briefly. Thanks.
John McPherson. I've been here in the county for a little while. This property has been sitting, I guess, basically vacant for as long as we've been here, and that's 18 years now. So we purchased it with the help of Mr. Kohler, and our intent is to turn it basically into a single-family home, dress it up a little bit so it looks a little bit more in line with the property here in the village, put it from porch on it, put some landscaping around it. And then we are here for a tourist home because our plan is to, once our son Finn, who is 16 and goes off to college, if he decides to go to school in another part of the country or another part of the world, our plan is to sell our Woodville home by a small place wherever he might be, and then use this fellowship hall, which is what we're calling it, the Fellowship Hall, use this for our Rappahannock home. That's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll clarify something. I was a listing agent when they bought the property, but I represented the seller, not represented the McPhersons on that transaction.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. Thanks. Would you mind if we just opened it to questions?
Sure.
Okay. And then, just as usual, our path here is this is preliminary review. We could either schedule a public hearing if there's a lot of interest and many questions to resolve, and if not, we could send it on to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a recommendation for approval or denial or no recommendations, in which case you'd face a public hearing at the Board of Zoning Appeals, but I'm sure you're familiar with that.
Sure.
Great. Thanks. Go ahead, Ms. Ritter.
Hi. I'm also on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I'm going to guess that you're going to need something written from Madge Carter about...
Yeah. She's already, we've talked a lot. She's already got all of the information she needs. She has the permit from our onsite soil analysis engineer that has already dubbed it good to go. So, yeah, she's on board.
Okay. That was the one thing that I was worried about. You know, I can remember dancing in that hall and thinking the floor would give out. So I'm glad you're fixing it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, yeah, it's, we're getting good at these cinder block building projects.
Yeah. That's true. I hadn't thought about that. All right. Anyone else with any questions or comments on the application?
I do have two. I think nobody else is going to go. I'll go. So this again is somewhat similar in a sense to, well, first of all, I'll say I am also glad you're fixing it up, and I think using that to bring it to home and that makes sense. I don't have any problems with the underlying issues there. But again, we would be asked to approve an Airbnb, excuse me, a tourist home before the home is actually built per se. So that's sort of, in that sense, conceptually like an application we had a couple of years ago where somebody was coming and wanting to actually build from the ground up. But not having it built, you know, makes, I would like to see, I'd like to understand more specifically, and hopefully it would be nice to see it in writing from the Health Department exactly what the septic issues are and understand that a little better. I was a little disappointed not to have that in the record in writing. But there are also some questions about the tourist home. Again, because it's not actually constructed as a house yet, I, you know, I think we ought to, we ought to look at this a little bit more closely maybe. But I don't, I didn't see from the application itself, and maybe you or Ms. Summers can answer this, how many occupants you're proposing for the tourist home?
Six.
Did I miss that? I'm sorry.
Well, it's in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you for that. And you're proposing to rent it out on a, just a weekly, nightly, whatever?
Like I said, the plan for the property is to have as our home at some point in the future. So any revenue that might be generated from rentals is kind of a bonus. So, you know, and it's, just to clarify, it's not going to be a bed and breakfast. We've done that once. We're not doing that again. If it's rented, it'll just be rented, you know, for the weekend for visiting guests.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I want to clarify about the Health Department issue. She didn't have it written up. That's why I got a verbal confirmation. The paperwork is forthcoming.
Okay.
And it's a new septic being installed.
Okay. What is the issue with the power line? Do you know what?
It's the right of way, so they just had to get an agreement to be able to install underneath of it.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you very much. And so the downstairs, again, it's a very cool building, and I really commend you for what you've done in this and others, to take older buildings and reuse them and make them into, you know, attractive, usable properties without creating a lot of new land disturbance. It's just a great, great way to do it.
Thank you.
But is the, so, but I'm assuming because you've got it as part of your plan, that the lower ceilings in the downstairs are going to meet all the code requirements, and there's not any issue with that?
As best our engineers and designers and architects have told us, there's more than enough room.
Okay. Because it says in your plans, if I could read them right, it's seven feet, six inches, which fits me just fine, I might say. But again, I don't, I didn't know the code requirements right off the top of my head on that.
Great. Yeah. We can only go by the professionals' recommendations, so.
Great.
I think this is a wonderful situation here, and it's going to be more oversight here than we normally see in an application because the complete renovations are going to have inspections by the Health, by the Build Department.
Yeah.
You're going to have electrical, you're going to have plumbing. Everything's going to be inspected. The drains field's brand new, it's going to be inspected. So the end result here is that you're going to have a house that is going to be renovated, and it's going to have complete inspections for everything that's going to be done, and it far exceeds the normal hodgepodge things that we see on older residences. I think from top to bottom, it's a wonderful planned presentation, whether, you know, you do two and a half baths or one and a half baths or whatever, it's your property that has those walls, and as long as you meet the building standards, you know, it's fine.
I agree with Mr. Henry, and I think I read in there somewhere that the water comes from the town, so there's no issues with having...
Boundary line.
Antibacterial tests once a year or anything like that either, so.
Good. Anyone else?
Nope.
I'd like to make a motion that we send this on to the BCA, and the missing septic stuff will show up by next month, and I think one public hearing is sufficient to address this, particularly since of all the on-site...
So I'm under the BCA with a recommendation for approval?
Yes.
Mr. Henry made that motion a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Shul, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.
I abstain.
You abstain?
For my normal reasons.
Okay.
And I'll abstain also.
Okay. They're abstaining for reasons unrelated to your application.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hope you didn't cancel other plans for tonight, because, okay. All right. Moving on, this is our second preliminary review. This is a special use permit, 22-01-02-Narmada Tax Map 32-14K for a tourist home. And again, primarily looking at this application through the lines of 170 66K. And Ms. Summers, if you just want to walk us briefly through this one, so we have the context.
Sure. Narmada has proposed to, one bedroom tourist home at 39 Narmada Lane. That is the first structure when you go down that lane to the left. In 2006, the structure was graded as special use permit to have an efficiency apartment in the existing barn. The septic was approved by the Health Department in 2003 for two bedrooms. BDOT does not have any objections. The property is 51 acres in size and it is owned air-pole floor.
Great. Thanks. Is the applicant present?
I don't remember that.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to say about the application?
Nothing.
Okay. Great. Anyone have any questions about this application?
Is there a separate septic for everything else? Or is there just one septic for, I mean, does it have its own septic system? The barns?
It shares a septic with the water.
What is this picture?
So has this been used as an efficiency apartment since 2006?
Used loosely. When it snows, somehow one of us stays over just to make sure it's being plowed, but it hasn't been more than, you know, I'm saying we're getting there to.
What are these pictures of this showing? Looks like it's a...
Looks like a septic.
Looks like a septic line. I was wondering if that's a new or is that old?
No, that's the existing. So the septic that was approved in 2003 for two bedrooms supports the tasting room and this, or what you said? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's the tasting room and the day parking, as well as there's a bathroom in the barn, and, yeah, that would be bathroom, the barn, bathroom, apartment, and why?
Good.
Is that a sufficient septic system for all of those uses?
The Health Department felt it was.
Well, what they say is it's sufficient for two bedrooms.
Your proposed use is one bedroom?
Yeah, it's one bedroom. So it's half of what the...
Great. So basically, nothing's changed with that facility, and ultimately, the use will just be slightly more intense than its current use for driveway plowing, staffing.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Anyone else have any questions?
So it's a two-bedroom unit, though, or it looks...
No, it's...
One bedroom.
One bedroom, a kitchen, and a family room. That's it.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Will dogs be allowed?
Yes.
Just kidding.
All right. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to move this forward.
I'll make a motion that we move this forward to the BCA with favorable recommendation of approval.
Okay. That's Mr. Henry's second of his motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Light, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Ms. Ishii, are you abstaining? Okay. We need to talk about that afterwards.
Yeah, I'm actually going to vote no on moving this forward with recommendation because I don't think there's enough information for sure right here.
Okay. All right. So you'll go to the BCA.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. And there will be a public hearing there and all of that. Thank you. Okay. Great. Next on the agenda is our third preliminary review. This is a special use permit, 22-02-04. This is Chester Gap Baptist Church regarding tax map number 1-87 Diaz and David, and this is a special use permit application, not something we see often, place of worship/activity field. And I think the sites to the zoning warrants are here, and I'd like Ms. Summers just to briefly summarize this, if you could, to kick off the discussion, and if the applicant wants to say anything, we'd love to hear from you.
Absolutely. Thank you. The Chester Gap Baptist Church is proposing to hold outdoor activities for the church on a lot that the church purchased many years ago. The church itself is located at 41 Waterfall Road, and the lots of this special use permit is located on Headwaters Road. It is proposed to use for the construction of the picnic, youth activities, Easter services, vacation Bible school, et cetera, on this property due to the limited outside space at the church itself. A 200 by 200 level pad has been broken off for these activities. The property is 24.33 acres in size and is owned residential village. The lot is currently wooded and vacant, and there are no structures being proposed at this time.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Why do they even need a special use permit? Can't they do this very right?
Because they're holding these activities at this location, the code requires the special use permit to be obtained.
I also had that question, just because I was looking at the definition of places of worship, which is what we're looking at here. I think it's in 170-8, it's a public place of worship, including churches, temples, and other places of worship. It includes cemeteries on the same lot as an accessory use, but does not include camps, retreats, schools, or other uses covered in Article 4 as determined by the administrator. So I guess the administrator is determining this, and that's fine. But I don't see any need in Article 4 to get a special use permit for camps, retreats, schools, maybe vacation Bible school, but I don't know. I just wondered about that as well. I, I mean, if you have a piece of property and you want to hold a picnic on it, I don't know that you need to get a permit, do you?
Well, it's a question of how many picnics you want to have, and how many summarized services, and how many other activities you want to do on it. And, you know, this is a very unique situation in that there's no building there, and it doesn't adjoin, I believe, it doesn't adjoin the church exactly. So I think it's probably good prudence on their part to have this permit in case some neighbor in the future or somebody in the community has, you know, an issue about whatever about it, and they were perfectly legal by doing this, you know. We've been very particular on issues with open space. I mean, we had a case here two months ago, three months ago, where people had two little camp sites on 60 acres.
Yeah.
We went overboard with that and made them get two blue toilets to put up. So I think it's very prudent on their part to try to be good stewards of the code.
Thank you.
To be clear, it looks like this got snagged at the building office because they didn't have the zoning approval, and it was the building office that, or the excavation that sent them here. So to me, this is really about the excavation and the earth change that's happening, and that's a little unclear to me. I guess my one question is, it's a little hard from the diagrams. Looks like you're taking a hill and flattening the top. Is that what's going on with the topography?
And if you could just come up to the microphone and just introduce yourself so we all know who we're... Thank you.
Hi, I'm Roger Orman. I'm the pastor, and I'm thrilled to have with us tonight Doug Gilmore, who is on our board, Earl Williams, who is my dear driver that brings me to the county, helps me keep all this stuff going, and Ed McGrave is the chairman of our board. So absolutely, we are trying to be prudent and follow the rules. Be glad to answer any questions that you have. Yes, it was a very steep grade with rocks and trees, and to have even an activity field there, we needed to level a small area, which was 200 by 200, and we went through that process with all the erosion control. And so now we're just trying to make sure we can get the special permit. I appreciate your comments. So nobody comes back later and says that we weren't doing what we're supposed to do. I assure you, we're only going to have one sunrise service, and it's one at Easter every year. Chester Gap is a small congregation there in Chester Gap. We're running right now, post-COVID, about 45 people in the building. In her heyday, when I first came almost three years ago, the highest number we got was 106. Now, let me just, you guys probably understand this, 106 people means that's people in the pew, not giving money and not doing anything. Our largest number of people doing stuff was a major event two years ago, Harvest Festival, which is a free event. We are not into charging and making money. We're into gifting and blessing. We had 34 volunteers that helped us make that one two-hour event take place. So it's those types of outreach ministry opportunities, not just to reach the community, but I believe as a pastor, it's really important that our people express their faith and fulfill the great commission to the community. We claim the ministry responsibility for Chester Gap Baptist. During the initial parts of COVID, we actually sent out like 500 prayer cards. Our people handwrote them, and we sent them out, letting people know, we're here for you. So we send out mailings about four times a year. In the application, and by the way, kudos to Michelle and the whole team. They've helped guide. I am not familiar with your protocols, and I did mess up a couple of times, but they have guided my hands instead of slapped it. So kudos to the team there. We're looking at maybe six or seven events in the course of a year. We don't have the funding to do more than that, as you consider. This is a special need for us. If you know the church campus, Brian knows where we are, you think we have a lot of land. The big parking lot belongs to the apartment complex there across from the fire department. We do not own any parking. The hill to the left of the church from the sign, the well, we maintain it, but we do not own it. So we are totally bound almost by the building. Our only free space is sewer drain fields behind the building, which we cannot do anything with for the nature of, we don't even park cars on those fields for a reason. Be glad to answer your questions, and we do appreciate you letting us present this to you.
Really good overview. Thank you.
I do have one question, just, this could come up at a later time, but I presume you don't have any intent to rent this out to third...
No, sir. We do intend to let the community use it at no charges. One of the things, our goal when we started presenting, I mean, it took a lot of cash to level that mountain, that even the 200 by 200, is we want to, we are partners with the fire department, and we would love for them to say, hey, do we ever need to land a helicopter? Absolutely. It's not going to have gates or barriers. Tell the helicopter to land there and have the emergency personnel bring the need there. You're fine. So absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Majority of your congregation live in Chester Gap?
I would say, I'm going to turn, I think about half and half. Is it not about right? We've actually, our ministry goes into Front Royal. We have a few occasionally from Flint Hill. When we reach out, we do, what is that called? Lake Front Royal. We do that community, Flint Hill, and all of Chester Gap. And Chester Gap's growing.
Also, one thing that you have too is the best apple butter.
Yes. Thank you. The man here has a secret recipe, so we keep him happy.
That's great.
But he is sharing that to his son and his adult grandson.
Hood used to be really good, but they quit making it. Now you're number one. Go down to Madison, you used to be number one. You're number one now.
By the way, we just purchased 100-gallon apple butter kettle. We're doing good.
See this wall?
Great. Brian, do you have any comments or questions?
I've been to the property. Now, granted, it was a little snowy and the terrain, it was a little prohibitive this weekend to try to get over there. I was kind of confused about exactly which parcel this was. I'm just surprised at how far, how big this thing is. It's much larger, and a lot of lots up there are tiny. This is a big lot.
Okay.
There's a lot of rim up there.
Okay. So a lot of buffer, given where they excavated.
Absolutely.
Okay. Great. Any other questions?
So let me just make clear what I'm raising here, and I, the point is very well taken that they don't, you know, you don't want to be in a position where you're later challenged on something, so I can certainly see trying to be proactive. But I guess, reading the definition here, if there were something you wanted to do, an event of some sort that was covered under Article 4, which is our use section, and like, you know, a retreat or something, some event, you'd have to go back for a special use permit for that because that's specifically carved out here. And I don't know that it's bad to just say, okay, you know, anything else you want to do, maybe we could pass this, but I'm hesitant to require a church to do something that other private property owners wouldn't be required to do. So if you can have a picnic on your property without having to get a permit, this, I don't think this requires you to do, to get a permit for, just because you're a church.
Due diligence is important to us. For instance, we are, last, two years ago, we demonstrated to the Chester Gap community, to our first responders, what we consider a harvest festival. We had a tent company come in, place the tent, and we hosted this for two and a half hours, free of charge, to first responder children, kids from the mountain, and our own kids, which was incredible because our people staffed it. Every event was free. The only admission was you brought individually wrapped candy. Well, guess what? You got it every bit, individually wrapped candy. So if we wanted to do what's called an old-fashioned brush revival, that is a term where you might rent a tent, a concert. So I'm trying to make sure that we don't, I heard you said, we're not putting up a school, we're not doing a gymnasium or anything like that for us. It's field sports and stuff like that.
Great, thanks.
So if you, just to just press this point just a little bit. If you, if we approve this special use permit, what I understand us to be approving is construction of a school. I mean, construction of a building.
No building, no ma'am.
Which is not what you're intending. And, but I'm just saying, as a point of interpretation of this provision, that's how this provision appears to read. So I guess it would be helpful to have some clarification from the zoning administrator or if necessary, county attorney, you know, as to, as to what we're approving. Because it appears to me we are not approving any of those kinds of activities under this. We're approving a facility. And if it's just the kind of uses you're, you're putting forth, I think neither you nor anybody else would have to get a permit for that. But anyway.
Mr. Curry, you want to weigh in briefly?
I just want to say, Miss Summers and I worked on this together. And the uses that you're speaking of, picnics and whatnot on your property, those are accessory to a principal use. There is no principal use on this property.
It's, it's a lot.
And so there has to be use provided for in your use table 170-36. You look down the column that has RV. There are very few things that you can do outside of residential in there. One of them is place of worship. And so Miss Summers and I are finding opportunities for Pastor Orman and his parishioners to make use of their property in places that are in line with that definition the best we can as a place of worship. There are a lot of things you can't do in RV and they will never be able to get a permit in RV pursuant to 170-36 because they're just not allowed. There's no SUP, there's no SE, there's no P in that spot.
Right.
But there is, there is an SUP for a place of worship. And we feel like this is what he has to do in order to actually grade the site. Even though that step's already behind us, we're trying to catch things up and allow him to get straight with the zoning ordinance and get straight with erosion sediment control. And this is the way to do it and allow him to have a place of worship as he's defined in his application. And you might constrain it through whatever conditions you think are appropriate to allow this in an area that's residential. Surrounding it is residential, even the buffer and everything else. There are certain conditions you can put in place to make the impacts from this use consistent with the typical byright uses or impacts that would otherwise be available.
Thank you. And it's worth noting in the staff report that staff recommended conditions include eight events to take place in a calendar year. And again, only outdoor recreation and services are permitted and that any structure obviously would have to go through a totally different permitting process.
May I ask a question about the tent? Because sometimes increment whether you need to put up a tent with limited access.
Depending on the size of the tent, it might require billing inspection.
It could be a zoning issue, but building code applies if you get over certain sections.
If it was a big tent, yeah. Great. And, and Mr. Schuler makes a great point. Thanks for going out in that blizzard and I'm sure it was a blizzard up in Chester Gap like it was at my house. Yeah, the buffer is very important to me, particularly given the density of population up in Chester Gap and the fact that it seems the excavated portion of this lot is basically in the middle of that. And I always worry about buffer and adverse effect on neighbors. If you had any plans for anything else, I'd note that a penal or correctional facility is not allowed in residential village. So, so note, if you get into the jail business, that's not going to happen. But anyone else have any other questions?
Well, I still have the concern that recognizing it's being built as in this fashion, I do think it's important that we assure, even though there's no expectation of renting. You know, I, I'm a member on board of our church and we get space use requests all the time, once you have a request. And it's always tempting because it's a fundraising opportunity.
Yeah.
And so I do think it's important if we're approving it in that light that we take measures to address that possibility.
We accept that without any problem.
And I, and I would, I do, because it is up in Chester Gap and there are neighboring properties despite the buffer and the size of the parcel, I, I feel like this, this falls definitely into the area where it would be good to have a public hearing. And we don't, we want to, don't want to slow you down too much. But I think in the spirit of due diligence, that seems like a prudent, prudent way to proceed.
Okay.
And what that would mean is if we went that route, you'd have a public hearing here. Then if it goes on to the BZA, one there too. And then by the end of that process, I think everybody would tell you all their concerns and you'd have a pretty clear
Sure.
understanding of how to operate there. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think this law rises to a level with the need for public hearings. I mean, it's already done. The neighbors have seen it, they witnessed it. The use is eight events a year. The zone administrator has put conditions on here.
Okay.
I think, I mean, it's going to be no additional county resources applied here, whether it's zoning, soil, building department. It's very straightforward.
Okay.
I think, leave it up to Mr. Schuler. He lives up there and knows the community. You know what a premium there is on flat ground up there?
I know what it costs to get it.
What neighbors may have noticed any groundbreaking up there are probably relieved to hear that they're just clearing out a left-hand spot. Here's another house.
I'm sorry, I have to disagree with my colleague. I don't know, I'd like to move that we plan a public hearing for this application at our next meeting.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Kohler, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Curry if he could a little further explain, just because I... It, so holding a, if you have a lot, if I, if I own twenty-five acres and I don't have a house there, I can't hold a picnic there for my family because I don't have any, it's an accessory use? I don't, I'm not quite following that.
I, I think you can understand, there is certainly a continuum from you taking a stroll on your wooded property that culminates with you inviting a thousand of your closest friends over to your parcel and throwing a music festival. And so it certainly, there is, there is some gray somewhere in the middle where those decisions get difficult to make by a zoning administrator. Those considerations were weighed in this case. And the zoning administrator and I have made it clear to the owners that you can't just go in and cut down a bunch of trees and level an area without a use that's provided for. Otherwise, you come in and click up the whole county and just say, "Well, you know, we're going to do something someday." And we don't allow that at our zoning board. So you want to disturb the earth, you want to get a zoning permit. You want a zoning permit, tell us what you're going to do. And if what you're going to do is allow, the administrator will approve. If it's not, then you need to get a permit through an S and an S and P and that's what we have to do.
Okay, any further discussion?
I guess the point is that you don't need to have a facility to have a church either.
That's true, but I just want to make it clear that based on this definition, if he, if they want to propose something that is covered otherwise under Article Four, they have to come in for a permit.
If they want to have a school or something like that, sure. If their long-term vision is to build a facility to enhance their ability to worship on that site, they will be back before you to get that approved.
Great.
So what is it that we're, we're approving?
Your...
Worship in an open field.
Eight times a year.
I'd do that, but okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do respectfully request that we have approval to put up a tent for up to four days so that we can do events if rain. I mean, you advertise, you spend thousands of dollars preparation and then the thunderstorm comes up and you can't have it.
There's no discussion about not allowing you to have a tent. The point is that tents of a certain size.
Well, a tent, usually a hundred by a hundred and twenty feet is what we usually put.
Right, so it'd require building, building office approval, just inspection.
And that's fine.
It's, yeah, it's just, it's just, that happens for anyone who puts up.
Yeah, and we use a reputable company. We bring in Jefferson Tent out of West Virginia. I would never want that liability.
Right, and that helps a lot and that's why we inspect them when they're large enough. So, all right, there's a motion, a second to schedule a public hearing.
I would just like to add, I think it's these kinds of things like, oh, about a tent, that to me, while I don't see this being an issue, I take the point that this is, you know, it's an open space, it's, it's limited. But there's a lot of unknown here to your earlier point that, you know, if the neighbors come up with a concern about, you know, what about this or that that they fear is being there, there may be additional conditions that we would want to recommend. So I feel strongly that we need a hearing on it.
Okay, motion is second.
Well, discussion further. You know, we had a similar thing here with the dog training center down at Amosville that was going to be pretty much an outside event. And, you know, we listened to the public and we had conditions put on it. And I think the majority of the conditions were kind of ignored at the BZA level that they couldn't be enforced and they went their own route. You know, the public is not going to be, not be denied ability to have input next month. And there was no question here that we asked tonight of the applicant or of the zoning administrator or of the county administrator that went unanswered. And it was not issues of VDOT, it was not issues of setbacks, it was not issues of utilities, septic. So this is a no-brainer use of a piece of vacant land that's going to have a couple uses a year. So why put the applicant in a church through thirty more days of this activity and push it into the summer for them? I mean, you know, and Mr. Schuler lives up there. And in this particular case, it's a community. Mr. Schuler lives in the community. And I think he has more sense of the community up here than anybody that sits on this board. So I'll look for him for, you know.
Great, good, good points. Any further discussion?
Well, yeah, I know, I can hear you trying to move past Mr. Chairman, but I think it needs a little bit more attention paid to it is that...
The motion, the motion in second is schedule a public hearing.
I understand.
Okay.
So in terms of a public hearing, I, on this application, the things that they have identified, I don't believe require a permit. So if those things don't require a permit, we don't need to do anything further. If they do require a permit, I'd like to understand, then I would need to understand further exactly what we are permitting because if they say a picnic, point to me to what provision in, in Article Four that says they need a permit for a picnic and then I can, I have to know more about what that is for sure.
I believe.
And if it's, if it's five to eight people having, you know, sitting outside in a field together, I don't, it doesn't, it's not a carnival, it's not a festival, it's not, it's not any of the things that I see listed here, it's not a country retreat, what is it? And so if you're relying on the provision for places of worship, the only thing it says about places of worship is that it's a church and it's a cemetery and it carves out the other things in Article Four. So I, I would need in that case to understand what provision specifically we're referring to so I can understand what the requirements are. There are, there are lit, there are special standards that added on to things like carnivals and other events in 170-65 in, in following up on that. But nothing that they have proposed is in those sections. So I don't know what it is that we're, that we are... So yes, in that sense, we would need a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, you know, these people have answered all the questions. And they've told us all the uses, what they're going to do. I mean, it's a simple presentation. Mr. Curry, apparently, Miss Ishi is having problems with, with your presentation of why y'all do what you do. Apparently, you're lacking in your presentation.
Yeah, I apologize for that. And Miss Ishi recited what the definition of a place of worship is. So we'll just read it in its entirety to make sure we're all on the same page. And that is, "A public place of worship, included churches, temples, synagogues and other similar places of worship. It includes cemeteries on the same lot as the accessory use of the... Does not include camps, retreats, schools, or other uses covered in Article Four by the district." So it's a place of worship, including all sorts of different things. Now, we believe what they want to do is, is in fact a place of worship, which fortunately is in fact allowed in residential village, zoning district in which they are located. We want to find a pathway for them to do the things they want to do within the district because they seem reasonable and they, you know, might not have too big of an impact. That impact should be measured by the planning commission through your analysis and possibly public hearing and the BZA through their analysis and definitely a public hearing. The neighbors will be notified immediately. These neighbors will be notified, go here and inform county. And they can come and express their concern whether the impacts are in fact too over risk for their residential area or not. But the fact of the matter is, there must be a use provided for in the zoning ordinance for you to do it.
Right.
And so many uses are in fact accessory to a principal use. And they are typically accessory. And so if you do have a house, you can have parties at your house and that's okay. Turn that into a business becomes not okay and you need to get, you know, some other kind of permit. When you do have a vacant piece of land, there can be questions. But the zoning ordinance is also very clear. You cannot turn the soil until you get a zoning permit. Now, in ag, that's going to be by right sort of thing. But in a residential area, you need to have a permitted use to be able to go level an acre of area.
Yeah.
You just have to.
And I'm sure we're not losing, we did get the permit to level.
Yeah, that's fine.
And play ketchup.
Yeah, we got that.
And so that's a condition C now, county government. They got us to this point, we're trying to bring this back around and give them all the authority that they, they need to do what they want on their property. And for the record, the planning commission is not a body who decides what permits are required and when they're required. That's the zoning administrator and staff. And applicant doesn't like it, they can appeal it to the BZA and onto the circuit court. That's done.
Okay.
Your decision is relative to this permit.
Great, so there's a motion, a second to schedule a public hearing. I'm just going to call your names so that we can, oh, you, okay, go ahead.
I would just like to add to the discussion a little bit, which is that we're going to have a public hearing in the BZA. I, I just think it's onerous for the applicant to have to go through two public hearings.
With all due respect, I'm sorry that because you're on both, you, you feel that you get your public input. But your responsibility on the BZA is much more narrowly focused. We are looking at the planning and the broader harmonious community. We have very different views of these things. And I'm very concerned that we're moving in a direction that says we operate without public hearings on these kinds of things. It is very much when there is a question about potential conditions that we would recommend and how well this fits within the comprehensive plan and the harmonious use of those communities. This is the body that is, should be getting the public input on that. This isn't about variances or setbacks or the kinds of things that are really the mandate of the judicial body of the BZA. So with all due respect, I really reject that argument.
Okay, great.
And I, I would, I also, I'm sorry, need to say that I, I mean no disrespect or, or lack of commendation to either Mr. Curry or Ms. Summers. And, and I understand fully their, their presentation. I understood it from the very beginning that what they're, what you're saying is they need a zoning use and you're believing that because there's no other thing in Article Four that gives them this use in residential area except the places of worship thing, that provision, that that's what we're relying on. What I'm saying is, in that case, if that is what we're relying on, there is no... Then I would like to know specifically what activities they want to do. And if it's those listed in the application, then I do think we need to move this to a public hearing because there's questions still to be answered on that. I also think it's a tremendous use for the church. I don't think you need a permit for it. I think you could go ahead and do it. But yes, I would, I'd say we need...
I'm sorry, one more thing. Miss Ishi, I think, I think you've got it kind of in reverse there. I'm with you all the way till the end. But just like the, you can't rent it out for commercial use, it's incumbent on us to set the boundaries and that's what the hearing is for. We don't expect them to articulate everything they might do as a church. If there are things that we are concerned about, we need to say, "You can't rent this out to third parties. You can't, you know, have the Rolling Stones there." Maybe you limit the number of people. Those are all the kinds of conditions that we might want to recommend based on input from the public.
As you develop anything you give us, please understand we are committed to sharing the gospel. And I will tell you that from a church planning growth perspective, if you do the same thing every year, you die. It is imperative that we are innovative and do what we need to do. I also want you to know, right now, we have a group of homeschoolers, not members of our church. We do not charge. Now, there could be a different administration after me, I understand. But the great commission is where we're coming from and we seek to do that. But the overarching piece that anyone who serves in my capacity and their capacity and in yours is, you don't gain if you make your neighbors mad.
Right.
We're trying to reach the mountain, not alienate the mountain. Now whoever comes behind me better know that or they won't last long. So my heart is, we will be glad, but I ask the commission, I ask, y'all have all these acronyms, the next level up, whatever it is, that you do not chisel out a list you can and a list you can't. I'm great, I think our church is great with things that fall within our purview to do evangelism and disciple people. But to, we were asked, you know, what are some ideas? Well, here they are.
Yeah.
But we do not do Harvest Festival every year. It may be a pig fry next year, you know, Boston Butts.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna call for...
One more question, one more thing. Reverend, uh, I just wanted to make clear too, that we have no, we have no control over you. What, we have no authority to pass regulations on you.
Thank you, sir.
We just simply upstream recommendations.
I understand.
The next level of BZA is that they got the stamp, they got the chains and, you know, they, they, what they say goes. We make, we make recommendations all the time and they're ignored, altered, everything else. So you, you may hear all this stuff here, you know, I, I, I believe that in the Constitution, and I believe that you have property rights.
Thank you.
And some people believe that the only property right that you have is to pay taxes and anything else is given to you by the government. I don't believe that. So whatever happens tonight, next month, what we do really doesn't mean nothing.
And I, I want you to know, we do appreciate it. And this is not drawing any lines in the sand, but it would be incumbent on me to tell you, I will answer to a higher authority always, but I will work at loving my neighbor always. And with that, we will find common ground until some group tells us how to share the good news. For today, our world needs Jesus more than ever before, and we will not back up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you're gonna be reading about yourself in the paper with some of those statements. Thank you, well said. Yep, so we're gonna, I'm gonna call for a vote, and I'd, I'd like to do this on a roll call basis, so we're straight. Again, the motion in, in second is to schedule a public hearing at the planning commission. Mr. Henry?
Nay.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
Ms. Ritter?
Aye.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Ms. Ishi?
Aye.
Mr. Shulon?
No.
And I vote no also, and that's, uh, four to three. So you're gonna have a public hearing here at the planning commission next month.
Same night?
It will be, yep, it'll be the same night and hopefully...
I'm killing my church services, man!
But it's, I think we, we wrestled with a lot tonight, so hopefully it'll be relatively quick, and then that'll be an opportunity for your Chester Gap neighbors if they're interested to come in and say a few words regarding the application. Thanks for your patience and thank you for your excellent presentation and thank you all for coming out tonight.
I do appreciate it.
Yeah, it sounds like you've worked well with our staff and we appreciate the accolades 'cause they don't get those enough, so thank you.
I'm gonna slip out, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna talk about signs. Almost, almost, don't get too excited. Thank you very much, drive safely. Mr. Curry, I wonder if there's any, anything in the way of an update on the Berkeley Group front? I guess things have been handed off for the time being, so I...
Just that the, uh, this body that puts electronically several hundreds of Berkeley Group and receives input, and they're working busily with their task, your next surface will be receiving some drafted book from them unless they have any questions and we'll see where that...
Remind us again of that timeline, when we should expect written word product? Okay, I was counting on you to know that.
I believe they were June or May, frankly, but don't hold me to that.
Okay, but as far as we know, things are on track. Okay, great. Yeah. Okay, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, just so we all have a clear idea.
So one, one point on the Berkeley Group work order, um, I, I, I know we discussed this somewhat, but, um, I hope that our focus with them will be primarily on giving us advice on, um, where we need to meet, uh, state code requirements, um, and the specific technical areas that we didn't feel like we had the staff expertise on.
Yep, that's the, I mean, that's, compliance with the Code of Virginia, um, is, I would say probably one of the more tangible elements of this initial, um, this initial review of our existing ordinance and, um, and then from there, we're gonna go into specific subject matter, matter, subject matter areas that we prioritize.
Although I would note that the scope explicitly excludes legal review, so I'm not sure how that squares with the...
Yeah.
Code, but...
And we can, yeah, and, I mean, that's a good point, and I think we should, uh, discuss that with Mr. Curry and others, how we, um, bring our current staff resources, anything, any outside resources necessary to bear on this so that we just keep moving along. But, yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
To go back to when you earlier, agendas, you'll see an example, I believe it was from Kent George.
Right.
Give you an idea of the sort of things that their review will encompass, and then there will be a lot of items from that that this body and the board supervisors will look at and think that you wanna chase down that, which time you will have to, which will probably be the county attorney, and, uh, it'll probably be a teamwork effort to amend ordinances from there in different areas as you see fit.
Great.
So I'll just note that the scheduling, the work order calls for the diagnostic to go through March, so presumably, I mean, I don't know, do we get that as a separate deliverable from the land use policy report? It's all together, so the land use policy report development is, goes into, through May, so, um, I, you know, if there's not an interim deliverable, I think we're looking at May till we get the combined report.
Okay, that'd be a good question to ask, and we'll just see if there's an interim deliverable on the, what was the...
The diagnostic.
The diagnostic.
It was kinda discussed as a separate task, but...
Give us something to chew on. Okay, great. All right, thank you. So, Mr. Curry, you'll ask him about that, so we may see something in April. Okay, great. Everyone's favorite topic, the sign ordinance, do you, what's the best way to proceed? Do you wanna...
Yeah, I'm not sure. Attached to this agenda, I have a few different things. You have, um, the ordinances was when it was first presented to you, the draft orders made in the zoning, uh, chapters for signs. Uh, you have comments that were received from several commissioners, uh, and they were kinda all over the board, uh, what those comments were. And then, uh, you have two attachments for a revised version of the zoning ordinance that, uh, I attempted to incorporate areas that I thought there was, uh, some consistency in a message or other area that I thought was missed the first time around or that could be, uh, better organized based on the comments. So there's the two versions of that. One tracks changes from the original version and the other is clean. I say that though, saying, noting that the base document tracks changes from the current ordinance, right? So you have changes on top of changes, but the, the, the new changes are in red and all the other are in black with... Does that make any sense? So if you see red text, that's new. If you see boxes to the right that are deleted, that's deleted from the prior draft.
Okay.
Anything that's deleted from, originally deleted is just skirting through in the, in the body of the area. So, um, with, I don't know to the extent to which commissioners have reviewed this draft for the last couple months, and if you want to ask questions or you want me to talk about high levels, some of the things that happened, or you just wanna go top to bottom.
I've got one, one probably threshold question. Um, I heard from one citizen who Mr. Light knows, um, who would love to see, um, temporary signs banned outright, and I wonder if you have any, um, thought about that and whether that is even some...
Same way you treat other temporary signs. You can't treat them differently. Um, I presume from a constitutional First Amendment perspective, you can't do it the other way around either. So you can't just say, well, we'll allow political signs, but we won't allow the others. And I think it'd be pretty tall order for this body or supervises to say, no political signs. So I think that really pins you into a corner that you're probably gonna have temporary signs.
So that's a re, the Gilbert type, um, consideration really because it's potentially discriminatory.
Uh, well, Reagan-Gilbert was that content sort of thing, but it's, it's more of a First Amendment.
Isn't the real issue with the, the temporary signs, it's not so much that's a temporary sign, it's its location on a state right of way...
Those are not allowed, period.
I mean, is that what they were telling you about? Or you're just talking about private, temporary signs in the public yard?
Well, it could be any...
I mean, the ones that are in immediate on two eleven that have been there for...
They're not, they're not allowed. VDOT will not allow you to place temporary signs in the right of way.
VDOT's not gonna remove them until they have to turn their...
They can remove it anytime they feel like pulling over on that spot. Uh, and normally they'll try to contact an owner and work it out with them and move it out of the right of way and then make a county zoning issue, um, where are they allowed or not, out of the right of way. That's where this comes in.
I mean, my, my issue with the temporary signs are the ones you find at, um, Masses Corner that are taped to the stop sign, things, yes, high speed internet that you can get right there at Masses Corner.
Yeah, so what this tries to do with some of that, and for small ones, uh, it, it doesn't require a permit, but it does require you identifying the date which the sign was placed. So then, um, a zoning administrator can go out and see a temporary sign, and if it doesn't have the date that it was placed, then it's illegal, doesn't mean it can go. If it does have the date and it's more than a hundred days, then it can go. Uh, so it provides a few tools that we don't have now where you can have it up for a certain period of time, but there's no real way for a zoning administrator to know how long it's been there. And then we don't know if they came out in the middle of the night and picked it up and then stuck it back in. Is that a doomed thirty days? So it's, the way it's now is very difficult, but by putting a couple of those tools in makes it a little more onerous for those that have the signs, and they probably won't all do it, but it makes enforcement more reasonable. That's, that's the idea. And we could, we could try to craft an ordinance to do it.
I don't think it was pending political, there's pending all temporary signs.
Oh, yeah, well, to include... Yeah, I think that'd be a, go to court and tell the judge that we shouldn't have political signs here, probably not a fine court act. But I don't, I don't make like slightly decisions.
So can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, thank you for the explanation of the revisions. I have to say, I was a little lost among the different markups, so thank you, that was an, that was a helpful narrative. But I guess I wanted to clarify, your now red, red line markup is your, um, proposed synthesis of all of the feedback you've been given so far, or is it just where you felt there was real solid ground or...
The latter, yes. So, uh, either real solid ground or there are areas that there were, there was conversation that sparked a, you know, there was discussion, say, about off-premise signs. The way it was handled before, it scattered in multiple sections, didn't make a lot of sense to me. And so from that, I just created a whole new section, one seventy-one oh two dot one. And there's three types of off-premise signs and that's where they are. And, you know, there was conversations about, from a couple, about the commercial definition of animated signs. And while it might have appeared in everybody's written responses, as is attached, you know, was, I think, made a lot of sense to move it to somewhere else, so I went ahead and did it. So it's not necessarily, you know, majority wins or anything like that. It's based on the feedback, this is the change. And each of you who provide the feedback might see things that, uh, recommendations that aren't included. Some of those are more subjective that I thought you might wanna meet out. Uh, so if you wanna do it at that level, you should go through those individual responses and see if there's anything there. I don't know, the order of operations relative to looking at those to what was synthesized. Uh, taking four sets of comments and try to incorporate them, that one change is not really possible. But I did.
You're amazing.
Maybe nobody's had it.
You're amazing.
So I guess I did something right.
I appreciate that and I recognize the challenge. I, I will say though, you know, um, I'm probably, I mean, I think I'm the one person who maybe didn't provide written comments, 'cause I feel like you had a lot, but I was the one person who came to our work session with specific comments, including, you know, the change to the definition of animated sign, that it doesn't accept any sign that indicates time and/or temperature, but only, a sign that indicates only time and temperature. So I still feel like some, there are important things. I mean, this is, this, these are critical wordsmithing type things, so I guess, I feel like we do need to go line by line through this. And I'm not, I, I suggest that we have another work session to do that, is my recommendation because, you know, I, I think the, the combination of these things is helpful and I, I appreciate that Mr. Curry didn't want to, you know, he, he was only putting in what was provided for it. But seeing some of my own comments that I felt were important not being in here, I suspect that anybody who provided comments would maybe feel the same way. The only way to resolve that is with this body.
That's good enough for me. What we could do, which we did the last time a work session was proposed, is we just continued this meeting to a date and time certain, um, and I don't know if we could just look at when we had our last work session because obviously it was driven by availability of this space.
Is the Berkeley Group gonna be commenting on this at all?
I don't think so.
This, this was carved, this was carved out 'cause it was underway.
You know, in the next year, um, if this is finalized, if it's not finalized, if it's finished, this scope of work, there'll be those other chunks of scope of work that you have telecommunications and local energy and events, those other things that you want to uncover.
Yeah.
You have to decide which of those things are the important next steps to feed to them. This might make, the other might not.
And I don't, I don't know if everyone agrees with that approach, but we are toward the end of our meeting, so we could just, um, set a date and time and, and, and I thought, I, I thought our work session was really productive last time.
I, I tend to agree. I have to make one remark though, I feel like there was a lot of time spent just listening to an explanation of what was done by others and the commissioners really didn't have much time to do our work. And now that we have these sets of comments, I feel like there's much more...
Yeah.
...potential for a work session among the commissioners.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm comfortable with that, I think that's a good way to go.
Okay. I think it was, was it on a, I don't know if it was on a Monday?
It was Wednesday.
It was a Wednesday?
Yes.
It must've been the second Wednesday?
It was.
Sorry.
Book in January twelfth, book was the number four in the presentation. Me.
You could potentially do the thirtieth.
Okay. I won't be here, but I'll, I'll put in some written comments in advance.
The sixth.
The sixth of April? Okay. What day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. Um, and, and time, we could start earlier, at six? The, the sixth at six?
Yeah, I'm just smirking, 'cause I'm the one who asked for it to be earlier and then I ended up having a work conflict and, no, that was the other one.
Okay, are you okay with this?
It looks like it, but...
Let me check real quick.
It's just tough, you know, you do your best to anticipate the same. It feels like it would be in everybody's interest to start a little earlier so we can end a little earlier, but...
Yeah.
There is that problem of the day creeping in.
Ending any document like this by committee is near impossible.
Sure.
You really need to think about the process that you're going to use to do that, and you just have to start fighting off line by line and getting consensus as you can...
And then move on.
Better grab by better grab or page by page, uh, because it's really not feasible to have three or four pieces of input and then try to do it again. You just aren't gonna get it.
Yeah, and I'll try to...
You have to start approving sections and narrowing down the sections that might create a disagreement, maybe greater discussion and dialogue.
Okay, and I'll, I'll try to play the, the, that role of peacekeeper.
Hopefully, your thoughts align with the board supervisors, so I'll just, you know, have to look at it after you do, and then might say, what do you think?
I won't, I won't say that.
I'm sure at least one of them will agree.
So it sticks, the sixth at six?
Six at six.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and put for...
I mean, I move that we, uh, continue the discussion of...
We're continuing this meeting.
Sorry, continuing this meeting, uh, till the, um, April sixth, the sixth P.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thanks a lot, everyone.
Major, sir?
No, major, major.
Yeah, that was, that was.
Need replacement.
A version.